Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 3rd, 2008, joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. Mr. --
Council members.
Call roll for the council.
Council members, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yosefian.
Here.
Chair.
Role for the Housing Authority.
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Mancie.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Brazian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yosefian.
Here.
Thank you. Could we hear the report, please?
The agenda for the June 3rd, 2008, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, May 29, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much, and let's hear the item at one.
Item at one is Director of Community Development and Housing regarding review and approval of housing programs budget for fiscal year 2008, 2009. One A is Authority Motion Approving 2008, 2009 Budget and Amending the Current Year Housing Program Budget. At one B is Authority Motion Approving a Three-Year Program Funding Allocation, including annual appropriations for the Life Wrap Program. At one C is an Authority Resolution Appropriating $163,378 to provide funds for a deposit with the purchase agreement for the Fifth and Sonora property, and that is all for one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go to the city manager. And I'll go to Madeline Blake, Director. Madeline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the housing authority. You have before you a detailed report on the housing programs budget. It's a $42 million program budget, and if you like, we have a very short PowerPoint that highlights the major points of this budget, and Peter Zovak, the Deputy Director of Housing, will present that.
Let's do that, and I think Madeline and we had talked about trying to hold this to about ten minutes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Draymond, Chair Yosefian, members of the authority, city council. As Ms. Blake had mentioned, the proposed 2008, 2009 affordable housing program budget is set at $42.35 million. That $42.35 consists of $40.4 million in new revenue to affordable housing, plus $1.96 million in carryover, and that's an estimated carryover from the current fiscal year. I'll talk a little bit more about carryover in these slides. Of that $42.35 million, staff is proposing allocating that money to five programs. They are categorized as owner programs and funded at proposed funding at $1.3 million. Renter programs at $33.4 million. Continue of Care Programs at a little over $2 million. Code Enforcement of $1.2 million, and Program Management of $4.4 million. In terms of carryover, I had mentioned that there's approximately $2 million that's anticipated to be carryover in this fiscal year. This is a significant change from previous year's carryovers, and the major reason for that is the amount of development that's currently in process initiated by the Housing Authority. We've seen this slide a couple of times before in previous meetings, but just as a reminder, the authority currently has nine projects, affordable housing projects, in various stages of development, pre-development, totaling 223 units, and Housing Authority funding alone of $36.8 million. In terms of the owner program detail, approximately $225,000 being allocated to the first-time homebuyer program. The American Dream Down Payment Initiative program is being funded to approximately $37,500. Ownership rehabilitation is $744,000, and new construction is $340,000. The renter program, majority of the revenue being received for affordable housing is Section 8 funding, thus the majority of the program that's being assisted is the renter program. Section 8 is going to be receiving $24.4 million in revenue, both from its Housing Choice Voucher Program and through the portable program, a majority of it coming from the city of Los Angeles. New construction is estimated to be funded at $8.5 million. The Life Wrap Program is being requested that it be renewed for a new three-year program, funding allocated annually, and the one-year allocation for this first year is set at $493,000. And there are some other various programs in the renter program that equal to less than 1 percent. Continue of Care Program Detail, Transitional Housing is funded $542,000, Emergency Shelter a small amount of $30,600, Permanent Supportive Housing at $612,000, and Supportive Services at $866,000. We've also included an org chart for the housing section, and we'll end with the next slide of just recapping what the recommended allocations are for the $42.35 million.
Thank you, Peter. Let me get some questions and comments from my colleagues, if there are any. Let's start at this end. Mr. Weaver?
One General, in future years, do you see a shift in the balance of where the funding is going? Like, the percentage right now is going into rental properties. At some point in the future, I presume that not as much will be going into it. I mean, I don't know what pace we can keep this going at, say a drop to 50 percent. Will we start to see that shift in out years, based on what the knowledge you have now?
I would say with the Section 8 program being as large as it is, you will continue to see funding being allocated, a majority of it into the renter program.
That, but the others?
The others will change annually in percentages. There'll be some years in which we'll have a higher number of ownership projects than we might have renter projects. There are some years in which we allocate money towards renter projects at the beginning of the fiscal year, and during the fiscal year, we might take that money and change it when a good ownership project comes along.
But you don't see a pattern of change coming?
Not necessarily a set pattern, no.
Let's remember Najarian.
Peter, do you foresee, due to the opening of the Americana, an increased need in our -- an increased number of homeless people for which we'd have to make some adjustment to the budget?
Now, I would let Jess Duran maybe answer that question.
I've seen an increase in homeless people surrounding the Americana. I don't know if anyone else has noticed that. New homeless -- I mean, I'm downtown quite often, and I'm wondering if that is significant, that we need to maybe keep an eye out on that for future budgets?
Yes, Councilman Najarian, we haven't received any reports from the outreach staff of an increased number, but we will make a formal inquiry with Path of Chief Glendale to see if they can give us an update since the Americana has opened. We will be doing a new needs assessment homeless count in January of 'oh nine, and uh...
And I forgot the number. How many permanent homeless do we have?
On any given night, it's 296, of which I think...
What percentage is chronic?
And 79 persons would be in a chronic homeless category, which would be those most likely to be the ones that...
Those are the ones that do not accept assistance.
Correct.
Refuse the pickup to help them.
Service-resistant, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Najarian, those are not additional homeless people that you are seeing. Those are West Side shoppers. They just dress differently? They just dress differently than they do in Glendale. I think that's what's...
The grunge.
Sort of that Euro grunge thing. Okay. All right. Mr. City Attorney, can you acquaint us with -- these are housing motions?
There are two Housing Authority motions and a Housing Authority resolution.
Okay.
Is it a motion? So moved. Which one?
A, B.
A, B.
And C?
A and B are two motions. You'll take those separately from the resolution.
All right.
A and B are moving in?
Just A, you said, right?
Well, A and B.
No, you'll take A and B together.
Okay, A and B.
Slaughter.
Call, call.
Authority members, Draymond.
Yes.
Mancie.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Brazian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Chairman Yosefian.
Hi.
And one C?
There we go.
Mr. Second.
It is housing.
It's housing.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is that Bob's Big Voice saying...
Yes, sir.
So I need to recuse myself because of a financial conflict of interest involving the ownership of real estate adjacent to the Casa Verdugo Library, which may or may not be affected by any development on this particular site.
Don't go too far.
Is there a second?
Yes, there was.
There's a motion second. Roll call, please.
Authority members, Draymond.
Yes.
Mancie.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Brazian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Chairman Yosefian.
Hi.
Okay. Someone would like to call up?
Just watching the monitors.
Mr. City Clerk, could we hear the item at number two?
Second item on this agenda for the joint meeting is Director of Community Development and Housing Regarding Overview of Community Development and Housing Budget for Fiscal Year 2008, 2009, and this is an informational report.
Okay. Let's go back to Madeline Blake.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the housing authority. Last week, we were asked to give an overview of the entire budget, which is what I plan to do today. The Department of Community Development, our mission statement is that we build strong communities physically, socially, and economically. Basically, we focus on neighborhood revitalization, quality of life issues, and economic self-sufficiency for the residents of the community. This is an overview of the entire budget, and I will briefly discuss the inconsistencies between this and the $42 million that Peter talked about in housing a little bit further along. The department budget, and this matches exactly what you will find in the preliminary budget presented by Finance, is just about $40 million for the department. Ninety-two percent of that funding is targeted, specifically targeted, by special grants. Eight percent is in the general fund, however, of that, only 3 percent is a direct allocation. Most of that goes to neighborhood services. The remaining general fund is self-sustaining programs, the GYA Youth Employment Programs, where they generate work, and also through the CCBG in Neighborhood Services, where they raise funding. The 41 percent of this budget is Section 8, and the additional funding sources are federal home money for housing, CDBG, the homeless funding, the Workforce Investment Act, Department of Labor funding, and redevelopment set aside. This is an overview of the operating budget of the city. 63 percent again is in housing, as you can see. These are -- and because 92 percent of the budget is special grants, they can only -- the funding can only be used for very specific programs with specific designated outcomes. And these, basically, these funds are used to provide services that would otherwise not be available to the community for neighborhood revitalization, affordable housing, social services, and workforce. The total number of positions is 96.42. That funds 5.3 positions in other departments, however, other departments fund almost four positions in Neighborhood Services, so it's kind of a wash. I'll go briefly through each of the individual sections. Neighborhood Services, we've talked about this in the general fund budget. As you can see, the general fund is about 34 percent of the entire budget of Neighborhood Services. 37 percent is redevelopment set aside, and Neighborhoods -- the $90,000 that you see there under projects and programs is the money for the Day Labor Center. This is the organizational chart for Neighborhood Services. It's a little bit difficult to see. Are you maybe could you put the light on just a little? Thank you. Neighborhood Services is divided up into Field Operations, which covers code enforcement, graffiti removal, neighborhood problem solving, things like banquet halls and a lot of the special calls that we get, and right-of-way maintenance. The customer service is the match. That's the support staff that supports the field operations. And then citizen involvement is the programs such as the Annual Cleanup Day, the Adopt-a-Block Programs, the poster contest, and all of the educational programs that the section operates jointly with the school district. The CDBG and homeless programs has a total budget of $5.2 million, and six employees. Basically, they administer the federal CDBG programs, approximately 20 CDBG social service projects, and 15 homeless contracts, and about 12 to 15 capital projects on an ongoing basis. These funds, as we've talked about, are used, from the federal standpoint, as an infusion of money for neighborhood revitalization and community facilities, with a very small amount for social services. This is the organizational chart. It's six people who provide, basically, program management and oversight for those funds. The housing section, that's -- you just heard that report from Peter. The difference in this $25 million from the 42 he talked about is, first of all, the money for code enforcement, which is funded by housing, actually shows up in Neighborhood Services in our overview. The $12 million we get as a result of the portable vouchers, because they come in and they're -- and it's used, Finance doesn't show that as revenue, so that's missing from this budget as well, and the carryover isn't shown here. So if you added all of those little things, it would come out to $42 million. And I won't repeat what Peter just said, so if you have any questions, we can -- we'll be happy to answer them. And he showed you the org chart for housing. Workforce Development and GYA, the total budget is about $6.5 million. The youth programs, that's the GYA, about $1.8 million is a self-sustaining program. Those are teams of young people who basically work for hire. It's kind of like a temporary work agency for youth and youth gain skills at the same time, and they pretty much support their own wages by the work that they do. The Workforce Investment Act is approximately $4.5 million, and that's made up of a number of different grants, all workforce-related, such as the youth programs, the federal youth programs are in there. All of the individual training programs are there. We have a special grant for the layoffs at the Interstate Bakery for the subprime mortgage. We have two grants for the subprime mortgage. We've had entertainment grants. So it's all the special projects, the social security, special social security, and the ongoing Verdugo Job Center operation, where basically we see about 7,200 people a month. 2,800 of them are new, so there's a lot of activity at the Verdugo Job Center. This is the organizational chart for workforce. The far left is the GYA staffing, then the Verdugo Job Center manager. All of those people basically provide the day-to-day case management and work at the center and referrals to training. The executive analysts, they provide business services for business layoffs, and then there are three people in administration. That -- so that's the overview of the department. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One second, Mr. Quintero. I just want to, before I go to your questions and the rest of my colleagues, I neglect -- I want to mention that I neglected to take a speaker on the previous item. It was Mr. Milano who had submitted a card to speak on item 1A, and I missed that, and I apologize. I don't know if he wants to still speak. If you do, we'll certainly hear you.
Motion to rescind?
No. Mr. Quintero.
I've got a question on the WIA. Will you be receiving notice of your allocations the 1st of July, or when are you going to know how much you're getting this year?
We have most of the allocation already. We don't have all of the funding for business services and laid-off workers. We expect to have that by the end of June. They said we'd have it in a couple of weeks, but this is pretty close to what we anticipate the budget will be.
4.5?
Yes.
Is it less than last year or more?
We had three rescissions. We had -- and then we had an increase, so it's about the same as last year. It's a little bit less.
Okay, and how about the Verdugo Job Center? When is the lease up on that building?
The lease is up at -- in December of this year.
Okay, and your plans are to renew it, or?
We're currently in negotiations with the landlord. We actually aren't sure whether we -- it's in our best interest to stay in that facility or to look for a smaller facility as a result of program changes. We split that facility with the Employment Development Department, and they've had tremendous cutbacks in their staff, and we may be better off looking for a smaller site, but it partially depends on the landlord and how much he is willing to work with us.
What is the current rent at that building?
Yes, Jeff.
Just a rough number.
Oh. Oh, the current -- the current rent for the facility?
Current rent.
Councilman Quintero, the facility is 23,000 square feet. It's about $1.65 a square foot, so it's currently very reasonable, and that equates to about $310,000 a year between -- split between the city and EDD.
How much did we spend to redo the building? How long was it? It's been six years, eight years?
Ten years. Ten years ago, we spent $1.6 million in CDBG funds for tenant improvements.
To redo the building?
Yeah.
Okay, so the lease is up this year, and the question is whether to stay in that building or to go to a smaller facility?
That's correct. Based on the data that we've seen thus far in terms of market rents, we would be looking at a significant increase. So we're looking at the budget long and hard to make sure -- to know whether we can afford to stay in that building or not.
We're currently paying $310,000 a year.
Correct.
The other option we've been looking at is potentially leasing out half the building to another organization, but that's not so easy to do. So we're looking at all the options.
Well, you have to look at all the options, but that seems like a stretch, that someone's going to occupy half the building. I mean, unless it's another nonprofit.
Compatible, correct.
There's some compatible use. How much per square foot again?
Currently, $1.65.
$1.65.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Yosefian.
On that issue, Madeline, I think sometimes we have things right in front of our face. We don't see it. It's called the old police building, sitting right there. I recommend we take some of our own money and put it in our own building and fixing it all up and not pay a third person. We improve their facilities and later on have to pay $2, $3 a square foot to rent a facility. Let's -- we have an old police building. We have room in there. Maybe we just put some money into, you know, fixing that place up and take a portion of that and move in.
It's a great idea. I've actually talked to Steve Zurn about that, because it would be -- we agree it would be a good option.
What do my colleagues think about that?
Well, I've been advocating that for years, yeah. I think that's a great idea. It's right here on the campus.
We'll get on that right away.
Mr. Mayor? All right. Was that it?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, some time ago, I asked, not here, but I was asking staff, we are doing a lot of filming out there now, and I asked what part of the building is it consuming? It's consuming most of the second floor. I said, what if, what kind of revenue is being generated by the filming industry that consistently is using the building, and what if we kept that second floor for filming and utilized the first floor not only for passports, whatever, the services that we're doing there now, but the remainder of the floor, move an apartment in? I think it at least would be worth exploring the options, is the revenue being generated sufficient to give a recommendation to keep it for filming?
Right, we'll look at that option as well.
Risk management's the one, is the key.
Anybody else?
Just on that topic, I'd like to see a, perhaps a preliminary report on the feasibility of that. There's some strange configurations in there. Parking may be an issue. So I'm sure that that's part of the process anyway. I'd like to see perhaps the interim report or the preliminary report when it comes out.
We'll do that.
All right. All ready.
Information.
Do you want to call someone?
Yes, I want to ask Mr. Milano if he'd like to still come up and speak. He's saying yes, he would, so if he could come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Herbert Milano, members of the city council and housing authority. Whenever I take a look at the -- and study the city's budget, one of the most important documents and the most practical document that you published on the web is the statistical report on the budget. And it is through the statistical report that we're able to at least get a sense of what is the scope and what is the range of benefits that we're getting out of a particular dollar amount. So that when you look at this Housing Authority budget report, and even though verbally and on some of the slides, we have information regarding the statistics, like how many families were serviced by this project, or how many housing units were provided by this project, the continuation of that logic would be, you know, in regard to, let's say, the Verdugo Job Center, which she mentioned 7,800 people a month were serviced. It's looking at the trends, you know, looking at what has been in the past and what has been the trends of the number of people serviced. What is the cost per individual being serviced? How many of those individuals landed a job, right? The outcomes and the statistics that are so important, because when you look at a number like 5 million or 15 million, how do you know that it is -- the information there is meaningful? How do you know that the performance is there to where you want it to be? How do you know what the gap is that is not mentioned with regard to the need that is not being met? Now, today we hear that the Employment Development Department is cutting their services precisely at the time when we have a recession. It's an amazing thing. So we find that when the need is there, we -- government generally tends, in this case the state of California, cuts it precisely where it's needed the most. And so who takes up the gap? Now, in the example of Mr. Weaver's suggestion, that we look at perhaps renting that facility out in exchange for income, it may make sense if the revenue that is being obtained could be put back into these projects to expand it. But if it isn't there, I think that the idea of basically moving the project out to that building would be an excellent one. But I think that we still need a set of statistics with regard to how many families are being impacted and what is the cost? Do we spend $30 million in housing to service 200 families? What's the cost per family? Or I have seen in some of these reports, what is the cost for construction per square foot for these projects that are benefiting individuals in need of housing? And from my limited knowledge, when I see those costs per square foot, seriously, I'm flabbergasted. Cannot believe that we're paying $475 a square foot to construct something that we're then going to give at a subsidy. It's insane. But from my limited knowledge, and that's not counting the cost of the land acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. All right, Mr. Yosefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address what Mr. Milano was saying, the last item. The issue, what the cost is per square foot, I think the public needs to know that we generally, maybe that may be the cost of the unit to produce. To build something costs $400, $500,000 per unit. That is not what this agency does. We do not pay the $400 per square foot. Generally, what we do is we subsidize at a tune of, we have done it between $144,000 to $168,000 per unit. That has been the amount of subsidies that we put out there. The rest of the money comes from tax-exempt bonds. It comes from the developer loans and so on and so forth. So the cost to this agency has been pretty low. And on this page that we went through it very rapidly is we are building 223 units, all the way from people, I mean, physically disabled, special... all the way from people, I mean, physically disabled, special needs, to low-income families, moderate income, and so on and so forth. 223 projects that are in the process of being built, our cost has been $36 million. That is a pretty good leverage for what this Housing Authority do. Let me tell you, this council, previous council, and the council before that, because every two years we change councils, has done a very good job since year 2000 to put together projects while in the past we had many, many millions of dollars in the bank. It was in the bank, and it just sat there. We have taken an initiative to use that money to produce the housing so we could put those very families that are needy in a nice housing. And so if there's any solace to Mr. Milano, there's 223 families that will have a nice warm bed to sleep at. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item five.
Just information.
Just a five. That's all.
All right.
Note on five.
Okay. Do we have a?
Move adjourned for City Council.
Second.
Move adjourned for Housing.
Second.
We adjourned.
Okay.